...America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you tonight asking your blessings upon us, gathering the people from Walton County, we conduct the business of Walton County in a way that will be pleasing to you, but we ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the meeting. Jerry, are you ready? I'd like to ask everybody, if you haven't already, please go ahead and silence your phones, we don't want to get interrupted if we don't have to. And, Wayne, you got any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, we have several continuances. If you would like to go through those now, we can list those, and I believe Mr. David said we can take, we can list them and have a motion to continue all of those because they're all on the same day.
Let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, several of my noticed an interesting comment on it's, let's see if I can find one, no, that wasn't it, back here for other, due to, well, something about the staff has got a lot of, due to outstanding comments.
Mm-hmm.
I've never seen that before on our stuff, and don't know what that meant, and also wanted to ask for the board's purposes, has the applicant agreeable to that, too?
I'm not sure, outstanding comments, as far as the applicant being agreeable, I'm not sure about that, and Brian indicates, yes, they are, but outstanding comments, when we go to TRC, we usually will move them forward pending those, the comments raised at TRC being addressed. If those comments aren't addressed, and one of the issues is, is that we have a deadline, and we have a deadline to advertise in the paper. That's about a week's time between the deadline to submit and the deadline to put in the paper, and many times, doesn't give us enough time to go through these, and so we'll go ahead and move them forward, put them in the paper, pending the resolution of those comments, and if they don't, if they aren't resolved by the time the book is printed, then we continue those.
The reason I ask is because I couldn't tell by just that phrase whether it was TRC or public comments.
Right. Now, when you see, when you see our comments, they're going to be, always going to be comments that we have based on land development code and conference of plan, comments being satisfied. If they're not satisfied, we don't feel like we should bring it forward to you because they're not, they're not complying with the land development code or conference of plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, with that being said, we have, the first one that we have a request to continue is number one, which is a let slave item inlet treat PUD large-scale amendment. Number four, step in subdivision under quasi-judicial. Number seven, Hinton Road abandonment. Number 10, Golf Place lots 19 and 20. Number 11, Fayard mini storage. And the last one is number 12, Lost at Seacrest. These are all requests to be continued until the June meeting, which is June the 11th, 2015.
We have a motion?
We have a motion.
Second?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
I just want to, one thing, it was said, it had, all these are just first time continued, not multiple continuances on a, on some of any of these?
We, we have some of those that have been continued multiple times, I'm not sure of the exact time, I know I see one that's continued from the June meeting, another one that's continued from the June meeting, so they're, they have been continued at different times.
The only reason I bring it to your attention and to the other board members is because sometimes the public gets disenfranchised by repeated continuance, repeated continuance, repeated continuance, and then they fall out of working in the process because they drove down here, or they flew in here, or whatever, and it was continued again. I didn't want these continuances to just...
Well, I think we continue unless there's a reason to continue.
Right, and I would tell you that the continuance is really at your discretion.
Right.
At the end of the day, it's your discretion to continue or not. If you want to hear it, you certainly can.
No, I just want to air those views and make sure that, you know, that the applicants are a part of this agreement when they're putting it continued, and that, you know, especially in multiple continuances where I just, I'm afraid that the public doesn't get involved so much, so many times anyway, and anything that further disenfranchises the public, because this is all about their business, and so I just ask that for...
So noted.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You step back and approve the minutes for the last meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review them.
Mr. Chairman, I vote motion to approve.
The motion is second. Any questions on the minutes, comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any more announcements?
Uh, no, sir. Well, we do have one more announcement. We have, one of our planners is leaving us, Tim Whaler, this is his la, tomorrow's his last day, he's been with us for a couple of years, done, he's done an excellent job for us, and he is going back into the private consulting business, and going to wish Tim the best, and we were glad to have him and proud to have worked with him.
Good work. Leaving the county?
Okay, item number one has been...
Continued, yes.
Continued, so we'll start with number two.
Number two is the Asland Recycle Center. I'll ask Vivian Schamel to give us a brief overview from staff.
This is LSC 15-008, a large, large-scale future land use map amendment requested by Asland One LLC, Margie, Margie Perry. It was advertised by Walton County in the paper as Lee Perry Recycle Center. It is actually going forward as Asland One LLC, and that is how it will be advertised from here on out. Their request is to amend the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation on 132.93 acres from public facilities to industrial. This is located on County Clay Pit Road off of east, off of Rock Hill Road. Just to give you a bit of history, Asland One has submitted the request to change the Walton County Future Land Use Designation, formerly owned by Walton County, who operated a borrowed pit on the site prior to transferring the property to Asland. There is a memorandum, memorandum of agreement between Walton County and Asland, and that is in your exhibits. The subject property is currently designated public facilities on the future land use map, a designation that applies only to publicly owned land. Asland One is therefore required to amend the future land use map, and industrial is the logical choice. A specific development proposal for the property will be subject to the county's major development site plan review process, and county standards will be applied at the time. Staff does find that the proposed amendment to the comprehensive, comprehensive plan future land use map is consistent with the provisions of the land development code and the comprehensive plan. Let's see, where is this? Okay. And this is the site, and, and the future land use map, and there are some flood zone A and X on the property, and there are some wetlands as well. Do you have any questions for staff?
I don't. David?
I do, of course.
David, before you start, just, just for the record, Mr. Perry is a member of the board, he is, obviously can't, not, will not participate in this decision, will file the necessary paperwork for... Sorry, David.
My question to staff, in the memorandum of agreement number three, it says Asland shall, and I didn't say immediate, but an appropriate reclamation plan similar to the one implemented on the Walton County mining operation. Wanted to know if that has been implemented, because it wasn't part of my exhibits.
That'll be with the development order, won't it? Will that be with the development order?
I don't know, but this, this is 2011 agreement, so I just wanted to know...
Because I think I was going to change it.
Says on approved mining operations, does Asland have an approved, that would be not Asland One, but yeah, Asland One, do they have a mining operation on that occurring currently?
That I'm not, that I'm not certain of, I can let the applicant answer that.
Okay. I think he's behind you.
Go ahead.
Are his designated.
Good evening, Commissioners, Cliff Nowitzki, Preble Rish. As Vivian mentioned earlier, you might recall that the county dug out of that pit for years and years and years, and there were some very steep banks, pretty much straight up and down, up again, adjacent to Mr. Perry's other property, and Mr. Perry ended up basically buying that property from the county. Some of those areas where the very steep slopes were, have been filled in with vegetative clearing material, which he's permitted to do, and so the closure plan will still have to match what the original permitted conditions were for that pit, and he intends to provide the slopes that are in the original permitting that the county was issued way back. And so, it's because the two properties are adjacent to each other, the slope issue has kind of gone away on the majority of it, because now, it's not a property boundary that's required to have the slope going back down to natural grade.
Just, my two questions still remain intact with that answer. It's just, does an existing mining operation go on there currently?
No, there's no mining going on on the property right now, no.
And that answers my second question, because it says, the memorandum of agreement only states that, that he will implement the appropriate reclamation plan with an approved mining operation, so if he's not gotten that yet, that's a cardinal for the horse.
Yeah, the mining's going on on adjacent piece of property further to the west.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
We have one member from the public side to speak, Mr. Thomas Hicks. Yes, sir?
My name's Thomas Hicks. I am the adjacent property to this property that's up for C and D. I own on three different sides of it, and the...
But which sides do you own, Mr. Hicks?
I own on the north side, the west side, south side.
The west side across the Clay Pit Road?
There's a 60-foot, it's a little discrepancy, I don't know where, it's not a discrepancy. I have an easement that goes from Rock Hill Road to my house. I am the only person that lives in that, on it, below that property. There is a, I could show you on the map there, on this...
You said northwest, yeah?
Well, it's, it's, it's on the south side, I own on the south side. I have a easement to my house on the west side that separates the, the old county pit and Mr. Perry's existing property that he mines out of, and then I own on the north side of that property, totally on the north side of the property, so that, and then the south side, well, no, let me give my direction again, be on the west, this, it corners, my property corners at it, the, so it's actually three sides and a corner.
Okay.
That's what it is. I am the only, any other persons, I mean?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I am the only residence down that road that will be connected to this C and D. Mr. Perry and I actually have, I talked a little bit about things, but this straight-off drop-off that the, Mr. Pepper Ridge indicated a few minutes ago, it actually still exists on the easement, which is to the east side of the easement. Now, on the south side of this property, which butts right up to mine, I had a 13-acre special acceptance back in 2002, I believe it was, that there is a straight drop-off on that corner also, on, where I, where the county, and the county owned it at the same time I did. So they dug up to the property line, basically, and I dug up to the property line, so there's, and there's a drop-off there. And, I mean, I, I'm not here to oppose the, the thing, all I'm here for is to be sure that, you know, that there's, we're considering a C and D landfill, and it's a recycled landfill, so I understand, that there's a buffer. I don't want it to devaluate my property with a, you know, I know it's construction debris, and there'll be, so Mr. Perry, I understand that we'll be sorting through it and stuff, but it's still going to be, I've done, I've done demolition, you know, I know there's everything in there, including the kitchen sink, so this is what this is going to be, it is what it is, and as long as, and, and, you know, I have some concerns about who's going to monitor the thing, you know, I'm not, like I said, I'm not going to oppose it to it, but I just want to be sure that before it's approved, that all the ducts is in a row, and, and I, I guess, in the future, I'll be back before y'all again on the south side of this property, like I said, it's a straight drop-off, it's 30-foot, 40-foot maybe, straight drop-off, and it's right now is on residential, which, you know, it's, it's on 1 to 5. I'd like to change it into something where I can fill that hole with a construct, land clearing debris and lot clearing debris, just as, as Mr. Perry has done. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just explaining everything to the, to the board, you know, the best of my knowledge, I don't...
So you're not opposed to this change?
I'm not opposing to it with the considerations of all the things that I've mentioned, is, is, is the buffers, there's, you know, there's going to be, all I'm saying is what's fair for the goose is again, or I don't want down the road somewhere to say, hey, Mr. Perry can do this, but you can't do that, you know, that's all I'm saying.
I understand.
Well, in your favor regarding those issues, he's asking for a different land use to industrial from yours, and of course, we have to change this to something because it's public facilities, and it's no longer a public facility, should have been changed when it was sold, but what it gives you, because it'd be a, a different land use than yours, gives you an additional 10 or 20-foot, I think it's an additional 10, but a total of 20-foot buffers before anything starts, so you get additional buffers, and if you're, or any of your parcels are general ag?
The, yes, it is, the north side is ag, and the south side and the west side was ag, up until five, say eight years ago, they wanted to develop it, and...
Depending on the uses of your ag property, there are additional buffers to improving if he gets, goes forward with a development order, so with a different land use, different than your own, it increases his buffering.
And, you know, like I said, it's the easement going to my house, and the easement has been there, it used to be Ed Brownfield rode up until the last couple of years, and I live in the house that Ed Brownfield built over 50 years ago, I've remodeled it, but I just wanted to clarify that, that my easement will either be in place with buffers, or the easement can be moved to a farther away from where it is now, because it drops within five, within five foot or two.
You're going to be protected, just like, just like, Chairman.
Yeah, you know, that, you know, but I just wanted to clarify the, the Pepper Ridge statement that, that the two properties connect, they don't connect, they are connected, exceptions to the easement going through there. I just wanted to clarify that statement.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
Anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? Cliff?
Mr. Preble Rish again. Just, just to clarify one thing, there is a, a large amount of clearing debris that has been hauled into the south end of the property. The slope where he's talking about the easement exists, is probably at least, I would say, at least 40 feet high for a very long distance, and, you know, that's essentially what Mr. Perry inherited when he got the property. But I would also remind you that, you know, we're not here tonight asking for approval on a C and D facility, this, the land use is the issue, and, you know, really, it probably shouldn't have been public facilities for as long as it has been, and so, really, tonight, tonight, we're trying to clear up the issue of what the land use should be.
Right, I understand.
And, you know, and if we move ahead with the plans for C and D, that'll be a whole nother operation, a whole nother hearing, and advertised in the whole nine yards. And just one small detail is that the old days of burying stuff in the ground with no liners is over with, the DEP now requires very heavy liners for any kind of C and D facility, and so, it's a whole new level of protection with any of these types of facilities that didn't exist until about two years ago.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thanks.
Staff, you have anything else? Member, board members? No? You have a motion?
I'm with...
Close, I'm sorry, closed public hearing.
I'm with for approval.
I'll second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Perry, you can come back now. Welcome back, Perry. Pollard, Lee.
Item number three?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is, item number three is stormwater management policies, amending chapter five of the Walton County Land Development Code. I believe Greg Graham with Walton County Public Works is here, I'll ask Greg to come up and sort of go over the proposal that's in front of me tonight.
Evening, Commissioners, my name's Greg Graham, I'm the engineering service and manager with the Walton County Public Works Department. The Board of County Commissioners had asked us to, after the storm events in July of 2013 and April of 2014, to look at some stormwater policies that might help the, some of the situations that we experienced during those storm events. A couple of observations we made during those significant events, number one was that there were a number of homes that were built below the adjacent crown of the roadway, so that was one observation that we made. The other observation was that some of our problem areas were in watersheds where there was no stormwater management plan, and where 20 years ago, it might not have been an issue as the homes continued to build and more impervious area went down on the ground with no stormwater management, it all created a problem for the low person in the, in the watershed. So, what we're proposing is changes to chapter five, the number one, set a minimum finished floor elevation, which we feel is, should be like one foot above the adjacent crown of the roadway. On existing lots of record with no stormwater management plan in the subdivision, this would require a stormwater management plan be submitted and approved at the county, meeting the same performance and design standards that are currently in our land development code for regular developments. There's also some cleanup involved in this chapter five for, there were some discrepancies between the actual design and performance standards that were in the comprehensive plan that were not reflected in the land development code, so we're just cleaning that, that up and making the land development code consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, I'm being happy to try and answer any questions you all might have.
Mr. Graham, go ahead.
Do you have a copy of the ordinance in front of you?
I do.
Okay, that would be, it's not, they're not marked by page, it would go 5.00.10 for...
Five point...
5.00.10, minimum finished floor elevation requirement.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
In the first sentence, you used the word above the highest elevation of road abutting the subject property. Two questions come to mind to me, how is road defined, and is it defined in the glossary of terms in the LDC? Secondly, what about those properties that actually don't abut a road but are accessed through an easement, or is a road an easement, or if it's a driveway across somebody else's property? Okay, so, I need...
I, you know, the, when this was drafted, intent was, you know, I was thinking paved roads are very good questions, and I'll try to, you know, work on addressing that.
Yeah, that's reasonable, this is why we have these.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I mean, road may not be paved.
Sometimes better than oil.
And, and it may be an easy...
So if we could get back in that either to define road, or use other terms that will cover everything more comprehensively, so that myself and the public could better understand...
Absolutely.
What we're talking about, which properties. One of the things I want to say, if it's a large-scale ag piece, and it's on 40 acres, let's say, and the home site's intended to be 500, 600 feet into the center of the property or so, how is it affected that way? Especially if the topography changes from 225 to 125, goes down in the valley, comes back up on the side of the hill, but the road's still, you know, 40 feet above where this house is going to be built, which is still at 125 of elevation and well-drinked, how do we address situations like that, given the limits of this language? And I think there are provisions further on to discuss that, and, but I want to bring that to your attention now, so that's kind of where I'm coming from when I see these. And I saw, well, my initial question was, how does that affect properties that are on the downhill side of a road that's on a hill? And I saw that you kind of tried to address that in there, and I wanted to be really clear about it, because we get down to number one right there, you said it on the natural elevation on the back wall and the front wall, and those are fine to me if the land is level or nearly level, and the roads are, if this is mostly South Walton, but is this 5.00.10, is this county-wide application, or is this a South Walton-only application that I've missed in the previous paragraph?
It's, it's intended to be a county-wide application.
Okay, then, I would ask you to, when you're bringing that to our attention, that it's, that we've taken into consideration, we don't create a problem for people who have a perfectly good right to build a single-family home on an agricultural piece of property that's way off the road, because this says that you've got to build your thing, you know, you've got to put your house up 50 feet in the air because the road over here is the situation. And I just want to make sure that those things are clear. One other question in number two on 5.00.10, is it used the park, and the front placement is better, if it's equal to or greater than 150 feet from the roadway? And why do we pick 150 feet? Was it just, was there data supporting that, or...
I think the intent was, the intent behind, I guess, subparagraph one and two was to indicate that it's not going to be applicable to everybody, but the whole intent of this is primarily just for what we observed out there was that, you know, people were like a foot below the crown of the road, and they flooded.
I understand that.
It's not intended to, if you're on a hill, and you've got a severe slope, and you've got positive drainage behind the home, that we would have you elevate 10 feet in there just to arbitrarily get one foot above the crown of the road.
And the road was paid with good intentions.
Gotcha.
And nothing personal for anybody there about that, but that's just an old adage I heard from my mother. So, what I'm saying about is, is if we can dress it up to where those are in some kind of exceptions, if your piece is over a certain size, or, if 150 is the number that we all work on, and your parcels are 150 feet from the road, that you're, then you're, you know, it's different, but why not 100, or why not 50? I just want to know if you had supporting data that brought out the 150 for some reason?
No, actually, I pulled some of this language from Oaklusa County, they've had a minimum finished floor elevation, and I thought it was a good start, and I understand the...
I don't have objections...
I just honestly, the 150 could be 100, 200.
There we go. Sorry.
I see where you're going with Mr. Kramer.
Yes, sir.
As far as trying to clarify.
And then on a, and I guess a little more iffy issue, this, the paragraph below number two, or the second paragraph in number two, was that supposed to be a number three because it really doesn't pertain to that? Was there...
That sentence was that if you're in a, that, that, you may be in a flood zone that requires you to set two foot above the road, and this says you don't have to set one foot above the road, that whichever one controls would be the...
The reason I brought it to your attention is because I wanted to be sure it wasn't only because it was in the same paragraph with number two, with pieces that are more than 150 feet from the road. If it's supposed to be stand alone on its own?
So it should have a three...
I think a number, I think a number three should be in there, if it was intended to be standalone.
It was, yes, sir.
Thank you. And then, of course, I've got some more, if you don't mind, or we can get into that. On 5.06.01, in the change to the first paragraph...
Give me just a second, so I can get there, Mr. Kramer.
Sure. Well, what I'm getting to is there's, when you get into... Well, what I'm getting to is there's, when you get into there, in the second sentence of the new language, it reads, "In all cases, the strictest of applicable standards will apply." And is that basically because of the floods we had or was that part of the language you drew from some other statute as well? The, I just want to know, curious to know for myself and for everybody, why the word strictest, why that sentence is put in there? And if it was drawn from other language or a directive from the commission because of the floods we had, I just need to understand and get my head around it a little better.
Hmm, well, I.
It puts limits on.
You know, I think.
Interpretation and use, which is, couldn't be good and couldn't be bad.
I think I, I just read it to be that, you know, there's a requirement, even though the county has its own performance and design standards that follows here, that, that there's also may be a requirement for you to pull a DOT drainage connection permit or a Northwest Florida Water Management District permit. And usually the most strictest comply. If you comply with the most strictest, then it usually takes care of the rest of.
So the applicable standards that it's referring to are a myriad of applicable standards, not just the county's applicable standards. It could be county, state, or federal is what you're.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My suggestion would be then to make it clear that I don't have any objection with it, of course. It's just that I'd like it to be clear that it would say, the strictest of the applicable state, federal, county, state, and federal guidelines would apply. Clears it up. And the next sentence, it says this standard, or this standard is, shall apply to the development redevelopment in Walton County. And single family lots of record. That is a very difficult phrase for me to get my head around. I know what lots of record are and we're defined, we know what they are. But single family lots of record is a creation, because further into the ordinance, you only refer to them as lots of record. So my suggestion is to either define for me what a single family lot of record is and what size it is and, because this is typically, we're talking about stuff that's non, in non-approved developments already with stormwater plans.
David, I maybe, and I may be wrong about this, but I thought the intent here would be to say, single family homes to be constructed on lots of record.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Because we're creating a new, a whole new thing in there if you say, single family lots of record. It, it opens up.
Okay.
Lawyers to drive a truck into stuff. Nothing personal, Mark, but I knew you would and see it and I appreciate that. So if we can make that change, just taking that away because it, there wasn't consistency through the ordinance because the other ones weren't called, single family lots of record, they were just called lots of record.
Okay.
And that was confusing. And for the overall of this addition in this one, this is primarily addressing only land, only lots in that meet this criteria, south of the bay, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I have one other question regarding it in the last sentence after, single family lots of record, it says that are not part of a previously approved stormwater plan. And, I don't know if the word and when they're, and are south of the Chogahatchee Bay would be good, or just south is fine, but I just was curious about it. Basically is, if it's single family use, in the interpretation of this, if someone comes up with an application, let's say it's even a 10 acre piece and it's a lot of record, and they want to put one house on it, they fall under this ordinance, is that right? They would if, because if they're just putting one single family on, because otherwise they'd be doing a development order, regardless of the size, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's my, I just wanted to clear it up for me and everybody else. If you'll go two pages back into the footnotes that you have on the design stormwater frequency and water quality treat, treatment volumes, you have annotations of footnotes on several of them. And the first one, because I'm not an engineer and I don't know if everybody else here is, footnote number one, the word annotation, could you, attenuation, could you describe for me what that is? I didn't find it in my Webster's Pocket Dictionary, so.
No.
No, I didn't. I must need a bigger dictionary and engineer's one. Can you explain to me, a pre, a pre versus post development discharge?
It's a stormwater term.
Is it a retention, does that mean detention, retention?
Attenuation means that after you develop, like say, say you have a certain runoff before you do anything on your unimproved property, well, after you develop your property, if you don't put in some kind of stormwater management system, the runoff will increase. Attenuation is, is what you're doing to prevent the runoff from getting any greater.
Particularly on number one in the first sentence here, I was curious as to why it said, "May not be required if the project will have a direct," and this is, maybe I'm missing something, it says, I'll start reading it out, "Attenuation of a pre versus post development discharge with the approval of the county engineer or his designee," which you can explain to me who that is, "may not be required if the project will have a direct discharge into the bay." Now, I don't understand that, why if it, if it has a direct discharge into the bay, why would the, why wouldn't it be required, may not be required? Why, why wouldn't it be even more required if it has a direct discharge into the bay?
Well.
That's where I.
Fundamentally, in stormwater management, there's two things you look at, flood control and you look at water quality. And attenuation has to do with flood control. Well, if you, you're directly on the bay, there are no downstream infrastructure or facilities that you have to be concerned with, so.
So it's not the discharge.
The bag and handle, whatever he's saying.
This is a flood control issue at this point more than it is a discharge issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That cleared it up for me, because that's where my confusion was. And then in number four in the footnotes, "Projects within coastal Dune Lake watershed require 150% of the treatment volume." Is this new or is there other language in the coastal Dune Lakes protection stuff that already extends this kind of stuff? And if not, why did we pick the number 150 and what data support about everybody else?
For special water.
I just need to know it's not pulled out of the air or somebody, you know, or.
Right.
It's just, it's not a willy nilly number. It's something that has a basis, in fact, in other legislation, then it's supportable, I can support it, I don't know about the other members, then I can. And I'm guessing, I'll just, I'm going to make a statement about all this. I think it's great. I don't have any real issues with it, other than when you change the law of the land, I just want to make sure it's clear and everybody's always on the same page and we don't create any problems for us going down the future.
I appreciate your comments.
One of the things that I questioned was an overreaching question about this ordinance, are we addressing it in this ordinance? Same standards within, that the ditches and it, from discharges, et cetera, that go into the bay or mosquito control ditches? Because it's not single family. I don't know that this was particularly single family in this section. County's not building single family, but it just says, it's performance standards on stormwater management. And I want to make sure that it's, what's good for the goose is good for the gander or is this just single family stuff? Or is the, would the county, if it was undertaking a project?
I'll use a recent example, the Walton County Industrial Park, which is a county facility, we followed the same standard, design and performance standards.
There.
So we have, we have a master stormwater plan with several lakes that meet this criteria.
Things are so critical, you know, we have alliances to help, want to hope to clean up the bay and keep the discharge down. And we've had long range studies of stormwater systems for the south end. And I want to see that those things in my lifetime hopefully get.
Sure.
You know, working toward it. And I want to know that if this, if this ordinance helps that or hurts it, and if it helps it, I can further support what I've already written. I have a question, if you'll go to the next page, it'll be number eight, oh, two pages back from where we were. Number eight is, I don't see any numbers on the page. And then go below that, down to number nine, it says, "To facilitate a timely review, the county encourages the use of a," could you tell me what an ICPR, sure, stormwater modeling software is?
Yeah, it's called, it's a proprietary stormwater modeling software program that the county utilizes.
Do other government agencies also utilize it?
Yeah, it's one of the.
Like a standard in the industry for engineers too?
Absolutely, yes, sir. But a.
I'm sorry, I don't know all of you are engineers, I'm not, and I just want to be better educated.
And the purpose is, is that when, when you're a plans review engineer and you're reviewing stormwater plans and you're having to discern and evaluate 20 different stormwater modeling programs that all have different inputs and different outputs, it, it's certainly a lot, lot, it can be a lot more timely if we can do it in the, all in the same software.
Okay. And when it says that that format is to the county, that would mean to the county engineer instead of the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why would I suggest that we put it into the county engineer, because I don't think anybody else will be able to read that? That'd be my recommendation. Down a little farther into number 11, the NRCS soils map, that reference in there is, that's the soils map we use for everything currently?
Yes.
That's not a different standard? I don't, I don't know the.
Yes, I mean, that's a Walton County soils.
And the NRCS stands for?
Um.
National.
Conserva, national.
Natural resource.
Nat, natural resources conservation service.
Okay, thank you. And further down in number 11, the last sentence, it says, "Open hole permeability, permeability tests are not applicable as an alternative method for the testing outlined above." And when you say the testing outlined above, what are you specifically referencing there?
Specifically referencing that we want a double ring infiltrometer or a falling head permeability test done.
Only the things, when you say above, only the things in this number 11, that's, that's all you're referencing, not something further back into the ordinance that I might have overlooked that was already in there, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in number 12, the design infiltration rates, you put a safety factor of 2.0, is that from existing or is that a new standard that we're going to use?
You know, it's pretty much a typical safety factor that is utilized in stormwater modeling and it really actually comes from the DEP, that particular safety factor, they've been using it for years in their stormwater.
Is it made like a two to one, is that what that?
No, it's.
That's a, a number for its own on these.
It's basically whatever your percolation rate is, you're, you're using half of that in your design.
So you're saying to figure out if your septic tank will perk, you can't pour hole in the water with post hole diggers anymore and that's not going to fly?
Well, the double ring is just a much better test to determine if it can actually take that, that water that's coming to it.
Okay, great. Number 13, in number 13, in the last sentence, it says, "The stormwater modeling will need to have this included for the review." And that's speaking to a 100 year critical storm event. And is that a software handled issue as well? In the end of number 13. I'm pretty sure it is, but I just wanted to be sure.
It is, it's, it's talked about.
It's referring to the 100 storm.
We want you to model the outfall structure for, although you don't have to.
Yeah, this has to do with the ponds that you build, nothing's breaching it, going to denigrate the walls of the pond and stuff like that.
Right.
And this software can do that as well?
It can.
Okay. All right. And then number 14, watershed maps, is that a standard or is that a very specific mapping thing? Do we, do we have, does, does public have access to watershed mapping or watershed maps?
They do.
That you refer, refer to in number 14?
Yes, I mean, you know, the county's LiDAR maps is basically a watershed map. You can look at the contours and determine, you know, where the water goes.
And the public has access to them without hiring an engineer if they want to try to get an idea before they say, in my case of the situation, purchase a piece of property and know that you're going to have to do these certain things, that you'll have an idea where your problems could lie by looking at resources that the government provides for us?
Yeah, I mean, the watershed maps are available in various places. The county GIS system can actually generate a watershed map. That's, that's basically how I generate all my watershed maps.
Thank you.
Is with the county LiDAR layer.
I was saying, number 15 is a great idea. You know, no, no comment or question about it, I just thought that was great. And number 16, it says, "In there lots of record," and that's where I was getting from the single family lots of record before, that it wasn't consistent running through the whole thing. So with the language we discussed earlier, I think with that change.
Make it consistent.
Yeah, I have no issue with number 16. And number 17, the only other thing on the foot, is it, it says, "An appropriate maintenance entity." Can you give me a, and the public a definition or an example of what an appropriate maintenance entity is, other than a homeowners association, I would expect, on a creative development, or the owner of record? Are there any other appropriate maintenance entities that come to mind that could, the county, that someone could rely on to say?
You know, the public say, or like, we're the maintenance entity for anything that we permit. The typically most.
Basically the owner then? That's an owner?
Typically.
Could be an appropriate maintenance entity?
The owner could be, particularly when you're discussing single family lots of record.
Okay. Okay, but there isn't any other, there's not like a company that can, that comes and does this as a specialty they maintain? There probably is.
Might be a good idea.
Yeah. Let's see, I think I have, I think that's it. Believe it or not.
Really?
No, I have one, no.
We've got a whole bunch more pages here, David.
No, I've got, I mean.
Almost done, they're taking care of it.
No, I've got one more.
Any, any, any other members?
I just had a, I had, I had one more open, one more question. Were there, were there any stormwater changes for mining operations? And not in this ordinance I saw, that I, that I may have overlooked. I was looking through the stormwater parks for mining operations and there were no stormwater changes for how, how that was, how it applies that, is primarily dealing with the single family stuff, is that right?
Well.
You don't recall any?
The performance and design standards also are dealing with regular, you know, developments.
Commercial, man.
New, new commercial developments or residential also.
But nothing specific to the mining operations?
No, sir.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any, anybody else up here have any questions for?
I don't.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
That's it. Do members of the public have anything to say on this item? Good. Somebody's going to go line by line. All right, we have a motion. A closed public hearing, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, we have a second.
With, I, I like to make my motion to approve with the changes that we've made, suggestions to the language about single family lots of record.
We got the change.
And any, and the number three, okay.
The motion be, the recommend, would be recommended to the board with the changes proposed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a motion to second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You ready?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the balance of the agenda are all quasi judicial.
Sure, anyone who anticipates testifying today before the board on any quasi judicial matter that is going to be heard, would you please stand and raise your right hand to swear you in? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you were about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Commissioners, have you had any ex parte contacts regarding any quasi judicial matter?
None for me.
All of the negative. Does anyone have any objections to the form or the appropriateness of the notice of tonight's quasi judicial matters? Hearing none? Mr. Chairman, it's all good.
Chairman, next item on the agenda is number five, FWC Storage. I'll ask Brian Underwood to give the commission a brief of this project.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is a major development order application submitted by Cleveland Engineering, requesting approval to construct 145,000 square feet of mini storage facility that would include up to 600 storage units on 7.61 acres as phase one of a 20 acre, multi-phase, mixed-use development project with future land use of village mixed use. Project is located south of US Highway 98, east of CR 30A in Santa Rosa Beach. You see the site plan proposed? Aerial photograph of the parcel. Location map. Flood zone map. Land use category map. Soils map. There are no known code violations on the subject parcel. And unless other evidence is presented to the contrary. is presented to the contrary, the project will be consistent with the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code when the comments and conditions stated below are met. I do wanna mention that the site is on the US Highway ninety-eight scenic corridor, but the actual proposed development is, uh, four-hundred, more than four-hundred feet off of the Highway ninety-eight right-of-way. This is for the phase one, and any subsequent phases would be required to go through the design review board, uh, consistent with the provisions of chapter thirteen of the We have not received any public comments. The conditions include all comments stated above are to be addressed. A proportionate fair share fee in the amount of sixty-thousand-four-hundred dollars would be required. All necessary permits must be obtained prior to initiation of construction. The project shall have a fire suppression sprinkler system installed in each building. The fire department connections must be located one-hundred feet from the fire hydrant, I guess, or less. The subsequent development phases of the site would require uses other than the warehouse-type commercial due to the village-mixed-use land use designation of the property. And in consideration of the unnumbered A flood zone designation within the site, the project agent has obtained a conditional letter of map revision based on fill or a clomer F, a letter from FEMA and future coordination with FEMA and the county floodplain manager will be required. Mr. Cleveland with Cleveland Engineering is here to address any technical issues.
Okay.
I have one question for staff, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to ask regarding the percentages of mixed-use requirements because this parcel's village-mixed-use over five acres. Uh, what are the percentages of use that are required in, under that ordinance?
I believe the percentages are unclear in the current regulations, and I believe, uh, the commission, the Board of County Commissioners has tasked our department with the objective to revise the language in the code to define some percentage requirements in the future.
Regarding, um, this project, part, uh, the three things that are required are, uh, public space or public use, uh...
Oh, civic.
Si- civic.
Yes, sir.
Uh, of course, the...
Um, in a different type of commercial...
And what about, and isn't residential required in this? And I didn't see in village-mix-use.
I don't believe it is a requirement, specifically. It is an allowable use.
And why don't you believe that?
We, we, our department manager has made that interpretation.
Who's made it?
Matt Carpenter.
I think that's the purview of the planning director only, isn't it?
Well, so are we, are we debating about the, what VMU requires and doesn't require? Make sure I understand. Um, I think, I think Brian's exactly right. The, the VMU is, is, it is a bit, um, I would say murky about what's required in there. Um, we have a, a case that was, a recent case we had that, uh, I think that was kinda brought out a little bit. So from that standpoint, um, if you read the, the language in the land development code, it's not extremely clear that it's required. It is, it is insinuated, the district's called mixed-use. However, when you go through there, the, it's not extremely clear whether it's absolutely a requirement or not. And as Brian has said, we have been asked to go back and review that VMU language to make sure it meets the intent of what, um, it was in the origins of it, which I believe str- started back with the trust plan. If you look back to ninety-four trust plan, uh, VMU was in there, and so we're, we are tasked with going back and looking at that and making the regulations crystal clear about what's required with, with village-mix-use. Obviously, the smaller the size of parcel you have, the more difficult it becomes to do mixed-use.
We just, we had an ordinance recently before us in the last twelve months that we changed it from anything under five, five acres or under, under five acres could do any one of the uses in village-mix-use.
But I don't, I don't believe that, that ordinance made it to final adoption, I don't believe.
But I thought that the ordinance, the way it was written, you're saying it's, it's not clear what percentages are required or if all three of the uses are actually required.
And as far as the language of that ordinance, uh, David, I'm not sure what, I, I don't recall the exact language that we, that we had in that ordinance, quite frankly.
And, and to my recollection, there are no percentages in, in the village-mix-use category, which...
Right, but I think it just says that you're supposed to use all three, though. I didn't, I thought that was pretty clear, and that's why I didn't see a, a residential component to this over-five-acre parcel.
We, we've always, we, since I've been here, taken the position you have to have mixed-use, but whether it's all three or two of the three or, uh, it's pretty unclear in the code. So what we are addressing, the commission asked us Tuesday night to specifically address...
And what two of the three are we addressing, are we using in this one? This one appears to be all commercial to me.
This phase is.
Well, the second phase is only commercial, too.
That, that will come up later on, David, it, that's not, that's not pertinent to what we're asking for right now.
But, yes, sir, the, uh, conversations that we've had with the developer was that we would include conditions in the development order that would actually require additional uses for the subsequent phases, and that's your guidance we can put in, I guess, whatever mixture.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't like the original ordinance anyway. It's not a matter of whether it's, I like it or not, though, it's what the law is. And the way I interpreted the law that I read was that, nothing personal, but that any pieces over five acres are required to have civic, residential, and, you know, all three of the mixed uses in there, and to be a true mixed-use piece. Not that I think it's a good idea, I think, you know, we don't have, and maybe that we'll get zoning before we have to redo this is be my, be my hope for you guys, because this kinda stuff comes up all the time.
It, it, it does.
But if we're gonna adhere to the law...
What we think doesn't count.
Well, I can tell you this, from the staff standpoint, we are absolutely gonna adhere to the law.
Yep.
Whatever that law may be, whether we agree with it or don't agree with it, we will, we are gonna enforce that. But what we're saying is, we've been, we've recently been tasked by the Board of County Commissioners to look at VMU, because there has been some questions raised, and I believe are legitimate questions regarding what is required. Um, and when they ask us to do that, that, we're gonna go back and look at the VMU to make sure that we, that that VMU is indeed meeting the intent that they had when it was originally placed in the conference of plan and land development.
In your opinion, does this, this project here meet the, what's required?
I believe it does, with, with the additions that Brian just mentioned, I believe it does on all levels.
Okay, thank you.
And my only other question for staff was, um, when we do phasing, is any bonding required that the phases, if we're making this appropriate, if we're making these changes, specifically if we were gonna be getting into, into the future, that, uh, other resident, like, the other phases will require a residential use, let's say? We, we found out that that's not the case now, but in other phases in the future, if we're, if we're, if, if this gets addressed in the future and this, and phasing's in...
What's the question?
The question is, if they're doing just one of the uses of three uses, and they plan to do the other in phasing, and then they never do it, what, what's the consequence? It could be nothing if we don't require...
We can't predict the future.
Yeah, we can't predict...
Well, David, I think that there's two answers. One, no, there isn't a bonding requirement, but two, um, if, if it's a condition of this development order...
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be a condition of this one because of what the planning directors just told us. But if we're clearing up the issue in the future...
Well, look, David, hang on, I, my understanding as a recommendation is, it will be a condition of this development order that the second and third phase would have a different use.
Yeah.
Am I mistaken about that?
That's, that's correct. Now, we, we've not discussed any timelines to specify when these phases would be required.
And no bonding's required either.
Correct.
Those are the things that I think that if you're gonna require those kinda things on phasing, that it protects us as...
Do you have any more questions on this project?
No. Yeah, but not for staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Good evening, Commissioners, uh, Ryan, Ryan Cleveland, Cleveland Engineering. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
You sure you would, you sure you'd be glad to answer any questions?
Have you been sworn in?
Yes.
You have been sworn in, okay.
Yes.
Do you have anything to say before we start asking questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, sir. I only have one question. I'm guessing that at TRC, the sprinkler system came up and that you guys weren't prepped for it, 'cause we didn't get a sprinkler system plan in there. Uh, and my question only is in, for the commercial buildings, will it be multiple levels of sprinkler system on each floor? You're having multiple floors in the buildings?
Uh, for right now, uh, we don't have the final drawings done for the buildings themselves. This is, uh, basically a shell for the size of the development order, and we'll have to develop those.
Well, with the number of units that you're proposing in this project, I would've thought that was gonna be multiple levels inside what looked like about a fourteen- or sixteen-foot eve.
There would be, uh, there's a potential to have multiple levels, uh, but like I said, right now, we haven't finalized, uh, the floor plan.
So then, your sprinkler system, what I'm saying is, for our purposes and protecting the public and the public's possessions in this venture, is, uh, if you go multiple levels, you think you'll be required, or is the county requiring you to do sprinkler, the fire, fire department requiring you to do sprinklers on multiple levels or just one?
It would be whatever the building department and the, I guess, the fire marshal requires.
Actually, we just got through with some litigation over this not very long ago. The Florida Building Code has various, now very specific requirements for commercial, uh, actually, storage-type facilities for sprinkling, so it, it would largely depend on the size vertically and, and the type of material and all that stuff.
It just wasn't in the package, so I had, that's my only question, thank you.
Just recently amended the code, not very long ago.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll open the public portion. I have a Lee Moore.
Thank you, Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E.
Are you sworn in, Ms. Moore?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you.
Um, my questions are more kind of the process questions around the DRB issue. So if, if this phase has signage that falls within the four-hundred-feet scenic corridor, which I'm assuming it will, um, would that come before the design review board?
Yes.
Okay, and so I have some, I share some similar concerns to yours about these future phases, um, from both the village-mix-use aspect and the design review board. I haven't seen any plans on this or anything. I'm assuming the building will be visible from ninety-eight. I'm assuming they're not gonna leave all that tree, I guess there's some existing tree, trees and all that.
Well, it is on the scenic corridor, they have to comply, don't they?
Yeah.
No.
For feedback.
This building's more than four-hundred feet from it, so that bill, that building would not have to go to the scenic corridor, but yeah, it most likely will be visible, I would think.
And I guess I have the same concern of if future phases never happen, we've kind, we've got a building on the scenic corridor that might not fall within that four-hundred feet, but could be visible. Um, and the other concern I have is that part of our, um, I'm on the design review board, part of our, uh, what we're required to do is to make sure the signage matches the architecture of the building, and like the monument sign and all that. So if we've got architecture on the building that's not, doesn't comply with scenic corridor guidelines, that might be challenging, could be challenging. I'm just thinking conceptually, it's, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around it, um, so...
If it's not on the, if it's not on the, uh...
My suggestion would be is we're gonna talk to Mr. Cleveland about getting up with, um, you guys before they design the building.
Yeah.
Not that they have to, but suggested.
Just suggestion, great, appreciate that. I think, I think it would probably help possible challenges down the road.
It certainly would.
Thank you.
Help him down the road, don't have to deal with problems.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yeah, I might be able to speak to that a little bit. Um, if you look at the site plan, that front, I'm gonna say, uh, the front portion along Highway ninety-eight right is wetlands. That all will remain at this point. In order to do a portion of that future phase, we may have to do some mitigation in that area, um, but for this initial, um, uh, phase of the project, all of that vegetation out front will remain, and, um, as part of the VMU requirement, our, um, what's the term for the community use or roadway? Civic use is, uh, this portion of what we're, I guess, gonna try to term as Line Bishop South. That is on a county right-of-way. The owner's gonna install that roadway to county specifications and maintain it for now in the hopes that in the future the county would overtake that road to open up some access for the adjacent property owners. Um, and our signage will be at the entrance of that roadway into the project and not out on Highway ninety-eight. So that will actually be a county road per se, not county maintained, but it'll be put into county standard for the house.
You're saying your only sign advertising will be approximately four-hundred and, or almost five-hundred feet south of the highway down at the intersection where you're bringing south down Bishop Road into the property?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So therefore, we wouldn't, you know, we're not putting the sign out on Highway ninety-eight and scenic corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Number six again, I was sworn in. I do have a, I know it's later, it comes later, but we have the nursery right side of where this warehouses is going in, um, and, and he mentioned entrance and exits and so on, uh, to that property. Uh, there was a, um, question, Walton's, Walton actually owns the, uh, Blossoms owned the property, it was Walton's old nursery. But anyway, my concern was the entrance and exits of the adjacent properties, mosquito controlled, it's naturally on the right-hand side, and there's, uh, it, this, these warehouses will make a jog to the right, uh, by the, past the nursery there. But anyway, that was my concern, and, and he, and of course, the sign being back four-hundred feet off, and that, that particular property back there, I know they have to go through the zoning and, and the wetlands, but that particular property is all wetlands back there, and of course, the map show it too, but I, I mean, that, my only concern was the entrance and exits and so on, that was, that was the question I had for it.
All right, thank you. Anybody, any other members of the public have a comment or on this issue? We'll go ahead and close the public portion meeting. Commissioners, do you have anything?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chairman, the next item is number six on your agenda, Quater Mason subdivision. I'll ask, again, Brian Underwood to come up and brief the commission.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development. This is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering requesting approval to build a four-lot, single-family residential subdivision on approximately point-six acres, uh, and with future land use of neighborhood infill. Project is located on Driftwood Road, approximately one-fourth mile south of Highway ninety-eight East in Miramar Beach. The project was subject to a development order number zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-two-seven for the beach cottage at Miramar Project. Construction was not initiated on the project under the prior issued development order.
Do we have a copy of that in our file, in our package?
Probably not.
Do you know what the density was on that property before, or on the project that was previously approved?
I don't recall.
Uh, and I guess while I'm asking, um, is there a compatibility analysis that's not in my package?
That's probably correct, yes, sir.
So could we take a look at this compatibility analysis? The reason I'm doing that is because, not that it's any denser than ones we recently approved, but we went, we pulled the last three or four applicants in the Miramar Beach area over the barrel about their compatibility analysis, and we should see yours, too.
Um, yes, sir. Do, I have it in the folder, um, one copy...
I'd like to see it, I don't know about the other commissioners, but, I mean, I don't wanna show any favoritism, or, or even the appearance of showing any favoritism, because the last three projects in that area, one of them we asked to come back before us because their compatibility analysis was insufficient to show that they get the density they want in an infill zoning. So it's not, it's not too much trouble, just for the sense of sake of propriety.
Work on this issue?
We have not received any public comments as of last week, nor this week, and a community meeting was held for the project on December twenty-second, twenty-fourteen. We have received the minutes and sign-in sheet from that community meeting. There are no known code violations at the subject property. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the project will be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code when the comments... and land development code when the comments and conditions stated below are met. The conditions of approval, if all comments stated above are to be addressed, a sidewalk buyout fee in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars will be required at the time of project plating. That has been approved by Director Dice. Public recreation space buyout fee estimated at two thousand three hundred and three dollars twenty-two cents will be required, that's actually at the time of development order issuance, not at plating. A proportionate fair share contribution in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars will be required at the time of project plating. And it is anticipated the subdivision plat will be pursued for the development project. All necessary permits must be obtained prior to initiation of construction.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question before David jumps in.
I'm done.
I, I brought this up at the last meeting for December's fourth remark, that I had thought it was in the business of this, and I had no problem with that one, I said I had a problem.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, sure. Any other commissioners have any questions for staff? An applicant?
Thank you, Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. As Brian did a good job of explaining, we have a parcel that is actually south of ninety-eight in the Miramar Beach area. This is the parcel here. You can see surrounding it, we actually have a town home condominium unit here that's density of about fourteen units per acre. We have an RV park that's here that's at a density of about ten to twelve.
Can everybody hear him? Okay, that's good, I just want to make sure.
I'll walk back over. We have a town home complex that's been approved, and all the infrastructure is actually in now, but the buildings aren't built yet, which is at a density of eight units per acre. A condominium just south that's at a density of about fourteen units per acre that's three stories. So as you can see, it's a, it's a fairly dense area, diverse mix of different uses, mostly multifamily. The applicant here just wants to do single-family four lots. The lots are approximately forty feet wide by about a hundred and thirty feet deep. The back thirty feet of the property is stormwater. We designed the stormwater for the hundred-year storm event in this location because it doesn't have a great discharge. And be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
You submitted a compatibility analysis?
Yes, sir. We, we actually submitted one and revised it based on, I think, some of the new requirements.
Thanks, I just, not that it, not that I couldn't see it didn't meet the density requirements when we looked at the map, but because of what we've done previously, I wanted to stay consistent.
I understand. I will mention, we did have one person show up at the community meeting who represented the development to the east, and their request was to rebuild the fence between the two properties, which the developers had agreed to do and provided that to them in writing.
Very good.
But other than that, that's the only response we could give.
Anybody else have any questions for?
Thank you, thank you, David.
No other questions?
No, sir.
I don't believe I had anybody sign up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the compatibility study, since it was not part of the packet, we'll admit it in debit says, "Applicants exhibit number one."
Very good.
Thank you.
Any members of public wish to be heard on this item? Hearing now will close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners, no motion?
Second.
No second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next item on your agenda is number nine, Arnett Small-Scale Amendment. Again, I'll ask Brian Underwood to brief the commission.
Number eight.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Skip that one, number eight. Coleman, Small-Scale Amendment fifteen-dash-zero-three, Tim Whaler.
Good evening, Tim Whaler, Planning Department. This is a small-scale future land use amendment on three acres with a future land use of conservation residential, one to two and a half. They're requesting to go to neighborhood infill. The project is located on the east side of Indian Woman Road, one quarter, quarter-mile north of Nursery Road. The subject parcel currently has two single-family dwelling units on it. This amendment will provide the necessary density allowed to do a lot split for the applicant. The proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, provides for an orderly and logical development pattern in the neighborhood and does not contravene the goals, objectives, and policies of the Walton County comprehensive plan. Mr. Coleman, the applicant, is here to speak, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of staff.
Any questions for staff?
Just one. Tim, the map, the future land use map that you provided us?
Yes, sir.
It's accurate, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the second, I guess, you reviewed the compati, the compatibility analysis as well?
I did, yes.
Well, it has some inconsistencies with your map, and I just wanted to speak to, I guess I'll speak to the applicant about that.
Yes, sir.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Please state your name and?
I'm Lee Coleman.
And you were sworn in?
Here with my wife, Kelly.
And you were sworn in?
We were sworn in, yes. I'd just like to take a minute to explain why this zoning change is necessary for us. We bought this property in ninety-six, and we put on a double-wide, and we were planning to build a house. But after we had bought the property, the zoning was changed from half-acre lots to one house per two and a half acres. So since we only had three acres, the county agreed to give us a non-conforming exemption so that we could build our house, and that solved our problem. But what we didn't know is we actually created another problem that we didn't find out about until last year when we tried to get a reverse mortgage. And the federal guidelines won't allow us to have a double-wide on the same lot that we have the house that's being remortgaged. So we have to somehow split, make, make the, give the double-wide a lot of its own. And in order to do that, we have to have the zoning changed first. So even though we're not building anything or selling anything, we've gone through all of the studies, and most of it's pretty dry stuff, but there are a couple of points that were of interest here that I'd like to point out. And the first is that our environmental specialist, Lyle Ziegler, found no wetlands at all on our property, which is a big deal for that area. And second, the compatibility analyst noted that the properties to the east and to the west of our neighborhood, of our lot, are designated neighborhood infill.
She said, and she said in her analysis, they're directly to the east and west, and they're not. I mean, they're not adjacent. It's a bit of a, it's a bit of a stretch where whoever's doing your compatibility analysis is kind of stretching the truth a little there. Just because it's east of it, it's not directly.
Well, the property directly across Indian Woman Road from our property?
To the west, yeah, but not to the east.
It's already been.
She wrote on here that on the east and west side, it was neighborhood infill, and it doesn't border it on the east side. I mean, she should be more accurate, is my thing.
Okay.
I mean, not, I, I like the project.
Okay.
Don't get me wrong, I'm just saying, when you, whoever you hire on these kind of things, accuracy is a big deal to me. I don't know how it is with the other commissioners, and I would say it was probably more, more so with them. But that's kind of a stretch.
The property that's to our east side, behind our house, behind our property, is Joy Rose. And I think that's what she was referencing there, that that's all.
I see that it's not far out there, but when she put it on her thing that it's east and west-side adjacent uses, it's not.
Well, I think that she also wrote in there that to the north and to the south, they're a lot smaller than zero-point-one acres and lots smaller than zero-point-one-five acres to the north and the south. So there's a space in between the infill that's to our east and our property, that's correct.
Yes, and I mean, that's the only issue I have with the whole thing, is whoever did your compatibility analysis was trying to lead us down the primrose path a little. I'm still, I'm still a hundred percent behind the project, I think it's great.
Okay.
How you got a, how you got a hundred percent upland piece in that area is just amazing to me.
Well, actually, before I bought it in ninety-six, we went to the Walton County Courthouse in Dufuniac, and I looked at the flood maps, and I picked out that piece of property, and it actually wasn't for sale at the time. And we contacted Deener in South Florida, and that's how we got it. We actually paid a premium per acre for that land. That's how, that's how.
Worth every penny you pay.
Very good.
And so basically, we need to get this rezoned so that we can get our reverse mortgage.
So there's two structures there already, there's a house and then a double-wide.
Correct.
You just want to draw a line between the two of them?
That's basically it, yeah.
Anybody have any questions? An applicant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this? Three and nine, we close the public portion. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
No motion? Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, we're going to take about a ten-minute break, and we'll come back and finish up.
Don't get so antsy, you don't have any to be. Yeah, he acts like he's got an important date.
Chairman, next item is, again, the Arnett Small-Scale Amendment. I'll ask Brian Underwood to come up and brief the commission on this project.
Thank you, Brian Underwood. This is project number fifteen-dash-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-zero-four, small-scale amendment number fifteen-dash-zero-zero-five. Walton County is a co-sponsor of this amendment with the Arnetts. The current feature land use category is neighborhood infill. The proposed land use amendment is to light industrial. The parcel's approximately nine-point-seven-seven acres on parcel number thirty-four-dash-two-S-dash-twenty-dash-three-three-two-seven-zero dash zero-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero. The proposed amendment of the adopted future land use map from neighborhood infill to light industrial is consistent with the Walton County comprehensive plan and land development code. The, Mr. Arnett is, at this time, he's asking if he, he wants to donate, dedicate a sixty-foot public easement across his property from Highway three ninety-three to the west to connect into Helen McCall Park. That would be for a future road construction, I just wanted to mention that. And that road was shown on the site plan that was included in the public notice sent to the affected property owners.
Would that be able to use in retrospect for a recreation donation for development at future purpose?
We would have to discuss that, but it would provide access to a recreation facility.
I think it should, but.
The property includes, again, point-nine-seven-seven acres of undeveloped land. The site includes Lot Six of the plat of Santa Rosa Plantation, has recorded in plat book two, page four, Walton County Public Records. We did receive, excuse me, this week, two public comments, I've provided those to you from Mr. Ray Estep and Ms. Rita Johnson Forbes. And I would make a motion to recommend either approval or denial of the proposed request for adoption of an ordinance amending the Walton County future land use map, designation of the nine-point-seven-seven acres from neighborhood infill to light industrial.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Anybody?
No.
An applicant?
How about that?
That's a new record, y'all.
Commissioner Randy Gardner, on behalf of the applicant, the?
You have been sworn, correct?
I have, yes, I mean, I had signed also. See, I have very little to add, other than general commercial is not allowed in this location. So light industrial is not something that he planned, he, and that's why I planned to, as a few people have said, light industrial, a lot of people think asphalt plants and so on, but nothing of that type. There's some light industrial to the south of this property already, and the sixty-foot road easement is obviously for the park. And it wasn't necessarily a trade-off, the conversation really started with going for neighborhood infill, the light industrial, and during, during the, sometime here, last couple of years, we're having toys on the property, recognizing the need for the park, it just seemed a natural. We talked to the engineering department, and to the county representatives along the possibility of donating an easement for the benefit of the park.
Because, because of the wetlands or topographical stuff that may be required to do it, is it the south side or the north side of the lot, or center, the center of the lot, that the proposed sixty-foot easement would go to Helen McCall Park?
I'm not sure. Royal Reverend Todd, the roadway itself?
David, they discussed two sides, either the north side or the south side, either one they want.
Well, I make.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's been sworn in also.
I bring it to your, to your attention to future and to the county.
Please, please state your name.
My name is Tori Arnett, and either the north or the south side, the sixty feet can go either way, whichever's more convenient for the county. Whichever one they want. I think on the, on the, on the flyer, or whatever you want to call it, it showed it on the south side, but there's probably, if that's where they wanted that span. If they want, if they want it on the north side, that's fine, too, but not, not down the center.
So Randy, what are you saying, that in essence is whichever way the county wants it, that's the way he's doing it to dominate?
Yes, to the north or the south.
Yes.
And that, that, this is something that the county wants?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
All right.
Well, I want to bring it to attention for South and the county, looking at this in the future, in case I don't make the county commission meeting when it happens, is that south side offers additional, offers a straight-line shot to their existing right-of-way easement into their park. It goes right into the road that dead-ends at what would be the six, that corner of your, south part of your property. However, on the north side, you add an additional buffer between you and the residential development between you. So six and one, half a dozen of the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Let me see. Randy Gardner? No, that was okay, I'm sorry. Ray Estep? Estep?
Yes, my name is Ray Estep. I do have a letter, I think, that?
Yes, sir.
Right, and I'm, excuse me, a property owner at one-twenty Edgewood Terrace. So have been so for about seven, eight years since we brought, bought the property. First, let me step aside and say I commend you opening with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. That's a nice touch, appreciate that. My concerns are obviously changing from residential to light industrial. I appreciate the offer that's made to create a buffer with a sixty-foot right-of-way, but as far as I'm concerned, as a property owner, I would prefer to not to see that road be installed. Light industrial means a lot of different things, but it also means trucks, equipment, people, a lot of traffic coming through there. Having two grandsons that live in that same community, they play in that same park. And that park does not have any room for any sort of truck, commercial traffic. I understand that it's easy to assume that that commercial, industrial, light industrial traffic might occur during the week, and the kids wouldn't be there at that time, but that's not the way it works. I happen to also be a manufacturer's representative, I have twenty companies that I represent still. I have twenty companies that I represent still, and I understand the need for manufacturing. It's important to our country, and I commend your efforts to try to accommodate that with your overall master plan. But the mix of light industrial to residential is certainly not to the advantage of the residents, particularly in the proximity to the bay and that area. Right now, we have commercial property to the north side of the Edgewood Terrace parcel. We can hear the trucks there, we can hear the loudspeakers during the day. That happens all the time. There, we have a nice little lake, I think it's Turtle Pond or Turtle something there, and that's, that's not a sufficient buffer. If you're serious about making a buffer between light industrial and residential areas, it should be a hundred-foot undisturbed buffer. Not a parking lot, not a roadway. You want something to interrupt the sound, to force that to go up, and some sort of visual screening to go with that. So, the only buffer that would serve any residential area, from my opinion, would be an undisturbed buffer. The concerns about truck access, I mentioned before, but that requires turnaround, idling places, wider roadways. The companies that I rep, they're all usually in some light industrial parks, such as the Walton County Park might be. The times that they're not, it's because residential areas have encroached into where they were. They were out in the country, the residential area moved that way, the residents knew what they were getting into before it was built. In this case, it's going the other direction. This property's been around for some, I guess eighteen, twenty years or so in Edgewood Terrace, and now we see we're wanting to go from residential zoning to a light industrial zoning. So my petition would be for you to decline, not recommend that. And I understand that would be a pretty aggressive statement, considering that Walton County has co-sponsored this recommendation. But by the same token, you've got a lot of residential area there to be developed. And I would think that this was a little bit like, this first step is sort of like getting the camel in the tent, so to speak, and that before long, that is a trend that's hard to stop. You have a church on a contiguous piece of property there, a park already established, a residential area, a commercial area. I don't think it's in the, certainly, Edgewood Terrace, our residents' best interest, nor I would argue that it's in the county's best interest to add to that light industrial. I thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. To the, and I certainly understand and appreciate his comments, to the south of the subject property is currently light industrial. To the north, there is residential and further, that adjoins the southern property line, and then north of that residential area is also light industrial. Any future use of that property, of course, whatever it may be, at this time, it's not, there is no plan to develop it as to what type of development. But at such time as application is made to develop the subject property, obviously, access would be addressed, buffers would be addressed to any residential that adjoins it, and anything in general that I believe would reference some of the comments that the gentleman just made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and ladies, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. I just want to make a couple quick comments. One, we, I'm sorry.
Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address?
I'm sorry?
State your name and address.
Rick Everett. I'm a property owner at Edgewood Terrace, one-two-five Edgewood Terrace. And simply saying that, you know, as a resident, there's a lot of residents here that don't understand this process. I got a letter about seven days ago. Looking at the site plan, we couldn't determine, as was previous testimony supported, where the road was. I have five feet setback from the mosquito control area already that goes out twenty feet. If that's where the road's going, that would significantly impact everybody on the south side of that subdivision. Point I want to make is, when you have this kind of situation occurring, you have a seven-day notice where people, common folks, don't understand the terminology and can't see that, and really can't understand much about the specific plans. We're having experience, the light industry across the road from us on the north side, we have an impression based on that, and Mr. Estep did a good job expressing that. But just like to be positive and comment, you know, I'm a chamber kind of person, I think business is important, but we selected that location because of the location itself. And to have a road put in right on top of mosquito control setback, we're right in the middle of an area that's going to significantly impact those property owners. The thing that I would request formally is to give us an opportunity to provide a little input, other than the short period of time. I mean, there's a lot of folks here that would have talked or said some things, but they just didn't know what to say. And closing, Walton County's done it right. You guys have done a good job of planning and setting up the future. That sets this county apart from many of the counties up and down our Miracle Strip area. I grew up in Vernon and Chipley and moved down here, and this is the place to be, and people appreciate what you guys are doing, but there's just so many things that we don't know. And we'd appreciate an opportunity to have a little input, a little time at least, or at least know a little bit more about it. The difference in the road being on the south side of that property and north side is tremendous. I mean, it would significantly impact us on the north side. I have two grandsons that play over in that park out of Chipley, Florida. It's a beautiful place, great vision, appreciate that, and that's the kind of thing we want to support. Thank you.
Mr. Everett, what I'd suggest is, as far as the process, you know, we make a recommendation on...
Understood. Right, and the county commission has to...
What I would probably recommend is that between this meeting and the county commission meeting, you might try to sit down with the developer to try to understand what's going on better. That might give you an opportunity to meet with them, to talk, and to, regardless of what we do, because the county commission's still going to vote on it.
Right. Is it appropriate to put formal recommendations, for example, the north side versus the south side of the placement of the road?
We're not doing it in bold and order. That's something that...
Okay, that's after the fact of this meeting. Okay. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name. My name's Ernie Gagnon, I was sworn in. I own property that butts the northern edge of this proposed application, and I'm totally opposed to it for, we have enough light industrial that it butts the north end of this property already, which is already detrimental to the activity in this neighborhood. And with the amount of traffic that travels down three ninety-three currently, light industrial activity is going to be horrendous. Never mind the access road that the county wants to get back to Helen McCall Park. Bringing that activity down three ninety-three is just overbearing, especially in light of the two three-hundred house units that are being, are under consideration currently for development on Santa Rosa Ridge and the opposite side of Santa Rosa Ridge. You can imagine the amount of, that's six hundred cars alone, twice a day. Never mind the activity that an industrial, light industrial area would bring to that road. So that's, just in addition to all the other points the gentleman before me made.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Ray. I live at one eighty-four Edgewood Terrace. I teach locally here in Walton County.
Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. So I'm a schoolteacher here in Walton County, and I actually own two properties in Edgewood Terrace, which borders up to the proposed usage change. And so my concerns are, that's a bus route for Walton County schools, and several students are picked up there, and there's barely a shoulder on the road as it is, so I'm concerned about the incoming and outgoing traffic. That would probably occur early morning when it's bus pickup and late in the afternoon. We've already had one death on that road, I believe it was two years ago, so that's a little disconcerting in terms of the new traffic that'll be developed. We're one of three roads that run from the bay to the beach, and I'm not sure that another industrial park would be aesthetically pleasing for visitors. I'm nervous, I stand in front of two hundred kids, but this is a big podium. And two, the park road, I love the idea of accessing the park, but I'm concerned about all of the people then accessing the park from three ninety-three. So now they're not going to turn on the Helen McCall Road, they're going to come down three ninety-three and cut right next to my neighborhood where kids will be going back and forth to and from the park. Yes, with the absence of the sidewalk or shoulder for that fact. Like he said, the traffic congestion already, I just feel that keeping it from light industrial would overall be better to benefit homeowners, business owners, and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, you have anything else to say?
Um, yes. I'll make a brief request.
We'll go ahead and close the public portion, so.
The comments I would add, as I mentioned earlier, and obviously each of you board members know, at such time the property's developed, so many issues would be addressed. The location of the road, sidewalks along that road, buffers to various properties. The planning department has certainly said that the project itself meets the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan as far as the development. That will certainly come before the board at another time. And I believe the issues that have been addressed by the public, their concerns, I'll say, will be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
The only comment I'd have to make, Mr. Chairman, is that this is strictly a development, anything that is put into effect later on to align some of the fears of residents out there, anything else that will have to come back for public approval again, this is just a...
Land use.
A land use, this is just a land use change. It's not a development order. The development order comes out, all of the residents in the area will receive a notification, pop notification, that would give you the opportunity to come back in and discuss what will be developed on that particular property. But now, it's just a land use change, and that's all. They're not building anything, they're not putting anything in, they're not developing anything. All they're doing is getting a land use change, and that's all. When it starts the other process, you'll still have the opportunity to come back.
And again, I would recommend that you try to meet with the developer, the property owners, and try to make sure that your concerns are understood.
Yeah, Hamlet County.
Yeah, Hamlet County, yeah. The public portion's closed. Commissioners, any motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Excuse me?
No.
I'd ask to speak as well.
Well?
Do you feel informed?
I'm with your force.
It's possible I missed her. Over to Mark.
If you could give something, Mr. Chairman, you can allow her to speak.
Okay, well, before we take it away, we will go ahead and allow you to speak. We'll just reopen the public portion for you. I'm sorry I missed you.
That's okay. I'm Rita Johnson Forbes. I'm representing my mom, who's a property owner, thirty-three Edgewood Terrace. She owns the two-acre parcel directly adjacent to the parcel that's being rezoned or up for land change. One thing that has not been addressed at all is the drainage issue. If you guys remember, a year ago, last April, this entire area was underwater from flooding...
Keep in mind, there's no development being approved here, it's just simply a land use change. And those things would have to be addressed if there's a development order, a development order request. Does that make sense?
I think that I have a lot of questions, along with a lot of other people that are out here, about the way things work. You know, we, I understand what you're saying, but I think that there's got to be a very cohesive plan between mosquito control, the drainage, the development, all of it needs to be looked at closely. Any more impervious area, and that is going to affect the drainage, and that's my major concern, is because everybody, all the way to the Catholic Church flooded. So all those things need to be taken into consideration. I understand why you want the road to relieve the traffic. I'm not necessarily opposed to this project. I just believe that there's got to be a lot of consideration made as to how it's going to affect the neighbors around. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with you, and all those things will be addressed. I said this is just simply a land use. There's no development going to happen, no development being approved. Okay, public portion is closed. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on your agenda is Royal Palm Small-Scale Amendment. I'm going to ask Vivian Schammel to come up and give you a brief presentation.
Good evening again. This is SSA fifteen dash zero zero seven, Small-Scale Future Land Use Map. The applicant, Royal Palm Capital Investments, is requesting to amend the Walton County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation on one acre from conservation residential, two units per acre, to low-density residential, four units per acre. The property is located on the north side of Palm Garden, adjacent to East Hewitt Road. Just a little bit of the history of the property, it is currently vacant and is expected to develop residentially. It's a meets and bounds parcel located adjacent to Royal Palms. The lots in the subdivision are approximately one-quarter acre in size. Low-density residential allows for up to four units per acre, which would be quarter-acre lots, with a provision for clustering to protect habitat and wetlands and to avoid areas of environmental concern. Planning staff does find the request to be consistent with the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Please state your name and whether you were sworn in.
Darrell Barnhill with ECM Engineering. I have been sworn in. For the record, Mr. Chairman, from the time that our initial environmental application was submitted, our environmental scientist has been to the site and met with DEP and has provided signed and sealed affidavits that there's no wetlands, no jurisdictional wetlands on the property. So we'd like to submit that and make that part of the record.
Okay.
This is the applicant's exhibit.
We ask that you accept the staff's findings. The adjacent subdivision is quarter-acre lots. Our project will be a quarter-acre lots in accordance with the LDR requirements. I think it's also interesting, the staff did a very good job in researching and found the error in the planning mounts to note that the project, that the property to the north is institutional. That's interesting. So we've got institutional to the north, we've got quarter-acre lots to the east, and our site provides for the natural transition from conservation residential to the quarter-acre lots. So, again, I ask you accept the staff's findings, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you may have.
Okay. Questions for applicant?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Don L. Wolf. Don L. Wolf? Okay. Anybody else wish to comment on this? Yes, sir.
I didn't, I didn't sign.
Please approach the podium and state your name and whether you've been sworn in or not.
I have not been sworn in. My name is Christopher Shanderson.
Sure, just raise your right hand. Do you sound square or from, if that's not, you'll get a different...
I do.
And your last name is what?
Shanderson, C-H-A-N-D-E-Y-S-S-O-N. Okay. I actually live in the neighborhood, I'm the only resident in the neighborhood, and the original owner of the neighborhood before it was... um, before it was developed. And that, that lot and the neighborhood has been, has been, I, I use the, the description of it, looks like a, uh, off the set of the Walking Dead. It was beautiful, the way it was set up, um, and, and their initial plans for it. And, uh, I'm, I just wanted to come up and say that I'm excited about this, um, the idea that these guys are, are wanting to develop and bring it back to, um, it's, it's an eyesore, the way it is right now. And I actually own the house there and pulling in, it's, um, it's, it's sad to see. It looks like, looks like it used to be a really nice place and it's not. And, you know, it's, it's, looks like the Walking Dead set. And so I just wanted to give my support that I, I think this would be a good idea to, uh, get this neighborhood moving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We like positive comments. Any, any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing.
I move for approval.
Second.
No motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before you, before you close, uh, there, two or three times, Mike, this, this thing jumped out to us about the, the public not knowing the difference between the, the development order and a land use change. And I, I really don't know what to do with that staff, but, uh, what I would suggest to the staff, if you get any kind of question, if anyone calls to ask some questions, if projects are coming forward, try, try to ensure that they understand the difference between a land use change and a development order. Most of the people who came up on this last one that we had, they were very concerned about what was going to be built there. But right now, there is nothing going to be built there. That comes to a later date. Now, all of their concerns, and I, and I understand, they left here very unhappy. And I, I know they did. I, I could hear them murmuring as they left. But I, I think it's a, a lack of, um, of information going out. And, uh, I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but, uh, if it does come in, in here as a question or, or an observation or anything else, I think that your staff should be, uh, instructed to make sure that they understand the difference between a development order and a land, land use change. But there is a big, big difference.
It's hard to explain that in the meeting.
Yes.
Because they're already unhappy when they come in.
Yeah.
I think the issue is, many times, we don't hear from them. They show up here, they get, they get a letter, they show up here, we don't get a chance to talk to them.
Right.
I, I, I feel fairly confident when someone calls, we usually have a lengthy discussion with them. I've, I know for a fact, many of the planners are on the phone for a very long time. Um, but we will speak to them and just remind them that, you know, i- if you're not doing that, then when you do get a phone call, explain to them on the small scale, large scale amendments, this is just the beginning of the process.
I understand. I, I, I have full confidence that happens. I, my, I guess my question would be, is there a way that that letter could be worded differently to maybe be more clear?
Um, we, we could definitely look into that. Also, we're looking at other ways to get public information out. Uh, we're, we're going to most likely put a, uh, a t- television in the lobby out there and run different pieces of information on that as people are sitting and waiting, uh, to visit one of our planners or get a permit, for example. Um, but we'll, we'll seek other ways to get that information out through public.
This is a tough, tough issue because if you don't come into the building, you're not going to see it.
Right.
If you don't ask a question, you're not going to know.
We don't send that letter to the development agents.
Oh, really?
Right.
Okay.
But, but, but also, you know, the development's pretty, especially in Walton County, it's a little bit complex. And many people, this is their first interaction with any kind of, um, developed process like this.
And I understand their fears and I understand their concerns, you know, but it, it, I, I hate for them to walk out of here angry at us.
Right.
Because they don't fully understand the process. And I, I know that it's, it's difficult.
But, but we'll definitely, um, at our next staff meeting, re- remind the, the planners and staff that when someone calls, be sure and kind of outline to them what, what the process is.
Even the county, county commissioners should, should be made aware of this too. Because a lot of times, the county commissioner will get a phone call on something like this and maybe they don't fully understand, you know, don't fully explain it.
Mm-hmm.
Because you, you, you could keep down a lot of the fears and concerns and with, with some of the public if, if they understand.
Correct.
And commissioners, if for whatever reason you were not able to attend the little training session.
What training session?
Uh, no.
You were there.
Just email me and I will email you the material that was, and you can go through it at your leisure.
Which by the way was very, very, very helpful, very helpful, very important.
Anybody else got anything?
Nope.
I was just going to add, um, the last lady who spoke, she did come into the office and I probably spent, uh, half an hour with, uh, her and her, her partner in going over exactly that. There sometimes people just can't quite.
They only hear what they want to hear.
Quite, yeah. Even on that specific project, my father-in-law, who owns property there on the south side of Edgewood Terrace, called me, frantic, called, called my phone and, and, you know, I spent, you know, 15, 20 minutes just telling him what, what was the process and everything. So I think staff does do it, but it is always out, you know, there's still just a lot of people who, um, don't ask questions beforehand and we don't have the opportunity to explain.
Well, we appreciate it. I know you work hard, you do your best.
Yeah, they do, they do.
Sometimes you just got to try to brainstorm if, if there is another way or a better way.
Yeah.
You never know, it could be.
Yeah, you, you have nothing. Both, both work at, work at.
That might work against you.
They, if we didn't love you, we wouldn't throw at you.
We stand adjourned.
Most of us adjourned.
That might not be a good idea.
I can tell you, 99.